Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
I'm Aaron Whitman, Chairman of the Shastbury Select Board. I'd like to call this meeting of the Shastbury Select Board to order. It's 6:30 on Monday, July 18th, 2022. Thank you. It's a pleasure to see people out there. This is unusual.
Yeah.
Wish we could do this more often. So, first order of business, is there anybody that has a conflict of interest in what's showing on the agenda?
No.
Minutes. You were all sent out minutes for the July 5th meeting. Entertainer motion to accept it is printed.
Motion to approve, minutes from July 5th.
Approved by Mike, seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. Warrants. I have payroll warrant. Uh... Which payroll warrant is this? Use it as a number. Because it's not important. I have a payroll warrant for $26,466.66.
Number.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0.
Just for the record, that's payroll one.
Okay. It does say payroll one on it. I apologize. Yep. Next, I have a check warrant, number two, for $63,291.72. It's moved by Tony.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Allegiance, which is the old Delurys, 6139. Du Caste Bouchil Vermont, $6,844. Express copy for $1,066.
That was for the Art Bacards.
Okay. Innovative Surface Solutions, that must be for a chloride.
Yep.
$4,464 and $5,099. New England Municipal Resource, $1,591.
That's the lister's office. Or the assessor's office. I have to stop calling it that. It's a old habit.
RCS Solutions Consulting, $1,009. TAM for June Services, $8,916. And then we have four for Weaver, $1260, $1260, $1260, and $2,300. Those are for projects around East Road, Church Street, White Creek Road, and Bayon Road. Full Sail Distributors, $4,280.
Those are new culverts. We buy our culverts from them.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next is announcements. This first comes to mind, we are desperately in need of people to step up for both the DRB and the Planning Commission, and we're going to be hearing from Mike on that today. But we really need to have full boards. These are important boards, and so we'll be hearing more about that later. Anybody else have any announcements? Public comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lon.
Hi, I'm Lon McFluttak, and I wanted to talk about the funds you're going to get from the state that are a little over a million dollars. I talked to Dave, I didn't get a card, and I'm about to leave on vacation, but I just wanted to tell you a couple of the ideas I've had.
Please.
Which, the first one is that there's some things that the town has routinely gotten state funding for. Sometimes, not when requested, sometimes a couple of years, but things like paving and stuff that are state grants for, there are state grants for culverts and some highway improvements. So, since this is one-time-only funding, I suggest that you think about things for which there's no state funding available. One thing, our generation of select board, which goes back than a decade, was to do something about this building, the first Unitarian church in the state of Vermont, which I feel has historic value. I think you've done a beautiful job turning this into office space, but just above these ceilings, there's a lot of board that's out of sight. And to the extent that you could do things to improve the infrastructure of this beautiful hall, it wouldn't take all the money, but it would take a substantial chunk. Floating a bond is very difficult, not very popular in my experience, so to the extent we could use that fund in lieu of a bond for something as important as a whole, I'd suggest you do that. Thank you.
Well, you came to the right meeting, because that's on our agenda. Seriously. Oh, we're putting out a... Yes?
Yeah, I'm Tim Skoggins. I would echo what Lon said, that this is one-time money, and the board should think about doing something big with it, as opposed to spending it on roads, things that we spend money on all the time, and I think that spending it on this building is a good example of that type of thing, and I endorse that, as opposed to using it for things that we won't be able to see after the money's gone. So, I agree.
Anybody else? Thank you. It's really on our agenda for this evening, too, okay? Kiss. Treasures Report, Melanie?
Hi, everyone.
Hello. Did you get my... Yeah, there it is. Will we start with the cash flow, please?
You always think I'm quicker at this, and I actually am.
There we go. Um, you can tell from that that I really need to get some money in the bank. There's some transfer station money that's burning a hole in my safe, and that will, that number will go up significantly next time you see it. The pre-bank from state, that's, we've already gotten into the tax season to that extent. That's the first payment, first download from the state that we got at the end of June. That tax reconciliation is the money, the final money, the education money. In this case, we had a small amount returned to us. It looks like a lot to us, but that's just rounding error for the education budget. So those were the final numbers. That was from both of the Supervisory Union and the elementary school money that they returned to us. And that's our first highway state aid payment for the year. Comes at the time for us. If you don't mind scrolling down, Dave, we've already got our first payroll, our first batch of checks, and as you can see, our cash position, if you go down a little bit more. So we're still in very good shape for not having to rely on a tax anticipation note. Looks like we will not have to do that, assuming that we really do get the tax bills out when, I hope we will. Dave promises me a grant list pretty soon.
25th.
Okay. So we should have it for the next meeting. You'll be able to approve a tax rate. The budget is all lodged in Nemrick, so we're good to go, except for our grant list number and our, the education rates that we get from the state. Actually, I think I have those already, so I'll be able to do that as soon as we have the grant list. It looks like it's going up a small but significant amount this time, which is always good for the tax rate, keeping it in the reasonable area, which I think it will be. No sense in looking at the budget projection yet, since this is a mid-month report, so why not just look at the reserve accounts? Mostly just water, as usual. I think there's one exception that I'll show you as soon as we have it. There it is. There, you see at the Class 3 roads, we've been running a bit of a, we've been showing a negative balance for that because of just the timing of reimbursement grants. That's, remind me what that was, Dave? Was it reimbursement?
That was the culprit we did at the top of Shastbury Hollow. That was the state reimbursement for that.
Correct.
And we have a few more reimbursements coming in. It's just the end of the year processing. We did them late in the year this year.
Yeah. So that was all expected, but that's why you see that chunk of money that came in there. The only other activity so far this month has been water payments. That included another fairly large check that we got from that state program that we've talked about a few times. And I believe that MRT has gotten some more money from the state as well. So people are continuing to take advantage of that. I urge you, if you can hear my voice, and you're having trouble paying your water bill, it's a great, great program, and if you needed the information, it's on our website, or feel free to call me, and I will give you the flyer that you need. I think that's all I have to say. Anybody have any questions about any of that?
Look forward to setting the tax rate.
Oh, yeah.
Next meeting.
I think it's going to be, well, I don't want to, I don't want to jinx it. I'll never see. Thank you.
So, the DRB asked to come in and talk to us today, so Mike, if you want to...
By all means, thank you.
Please.
Thank you for the time.
Our pleasure.
With the resignation of Tom Huncherick from the DRB, which whom we will miss significantly, we thought it appropriate, since we are now down to three members, to certainly keep the select board appraised the situation and any potential problems that could arise either in the near term or certainly in a little bit longer term. I've listed our current members, myself, Ted Everfield, and Lon, and our expiration date for our current terms. The full board membership is five members. We are also authorized to have two alternates who can substitute for full members and allow for continuity under specific criteria, but nevertheless allow for continuity of the board and to be responsive to the citizens' needs. We are down to three, which constitutes a forum, which is five members. We are out of five. Should any of us not be in a position to be at a meeting, we would not have a forum, could not conduct business. Certainly, we, the three of us have certainly agreed that we will work with any applicants to schedule meetings to meet their needs, so we will try not to let that potential problem impact anybody's requirements. So, let that be known. And looking a little bit further down the road, in the potential, after the election, in the potential November-December timeframe, in the event that Lon is elected to probate Judge, we would be down to two members and no longer have a forum. So that could present some issues. There are things which, a couple things, just for information purposes, is that if we are, if we take action, or you have a hearing on a particular application and close the hearing, but do not have a meeting to approve the request, the application, if 45 days pass from the time the hearing is closed, it's automatically approved.
Forty-five?
Forty-five is the, is the timeline. That is correct. Now normally, we hear those, and have those hearings, and then close the hearings, and most typically, we convene for our judgment at that same time. There are occasions where we need some additional information coming out of the hearing, but we wait for that to ensure that we have the proper information, the most accurate information. But we have not run up against that timeframe, that time fence in the time that I've been on the board. But that is out there because of, when you're down to three members, and if one is falls sick or something of that nature, it becomes a potential issue. So I just wanted to brief the board on that piece of the equation. So we will be flexible in our response. We would ask that on the website, the membership positions, we have, we have gone through our internal election. I am now Chair, replacing Tom, and Ted Everfield is now Vice Chair, and our term limits are now, term expires in 2025, and if we could have that updated on the website, that would be handy with the folks to be aware of.
Dave?
Yep, just made a note of that. Both of yours are 2025?
All of them.
All three? Okay.
Yes. We'll make it easy for you.
That's an easier change.
There you go.
That's what Holly does, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would also ask that these positions, we have two full members and two alternates be added to the positions that are now being advertised, if you will, on the town website. Please add those. And if you have other places that you advertise for, like now, Front Porch Forum, other places, Beddington Banner and so on, we would certainly like to avail ourselves of that as well as an opportunity. And since many of you know many people, talk about it.
This is critical, because we owe it to the citizens to...
Absolutely.
To do their petitions.
You know, we are not, our backs are not quite against the wall yet, but...
This is serious.
We're getting close.
So, can you tell me what the timeframe, our kind of time of working on the board? Is it an hour-long meeting typically? I know when you have hearings, it's, I'm sure, different. Is it once a month? Is it twice a month? Those kinds of things? Because I think the citizens...
We schedule meetings twice a month.
Okay.
First and third Wednesdays at 6:00 PM here, under quote "normal" conditions.
Yeah.
So, twice a month. And unless we have some lengthy applications to hear, which may be involved or have a lot of information to have to review, that can cause meetings to maybe run up to two hours. I don't ever recall us ever going beyond two hours. Mostly we're down to one-hour timeframe or even a little bit less. Because really, our activities are such that we are responding strictly to applications, applications which may have not been approved by the zoning administrator and referred to the DRB for judgment.
Plus all commercials, right?
Commercials and things like change of use, things of residence conversion, motel conversions to recently the apartments, that type of thing, yes. So, you know, it's, and if there's no business, you know, and we have nothing internally going on, then we typically do not.
Okay.
Now, over the last, I'll say, three months, we have been working, and I think we have a good working document now. We're revising our internal rules of procedure, how we operate, if you will, okay? And that has been updated, somewhat reorganized, so that people, and some of the documents that people need to be familiar with, rules of evidence and things of that nature, things that people need to be familiar with and so on, that they can, they can obtain from the town website to make their working with the DRB much easier. And so that should be wrapped up here in very, very near future, and those are a lot more easier to read, understand, and find the information that they need. And that's taken a little bit of, a little bit of time, but that is not reviewed every, you know, maybe a once a year at most.
Short.
Type of a situation. I really can't think of anything else.
I would add a couple things. During the winter, when there's not a lot of development going on, or people aren't subdividing land, we have gone an entire month without meeting, or having only one meeting. And when it's business, it's typically 30 to 45 minutes, as opposed to site plan review or something like that. The other thing is, with only three members, we have to have unanimous...
I was just wanting to ask you that. Five-member board, you know, all three have to...
Have to agree. So if somebody wants to propose a home occupation, and the issue is, will this substantially change the character of the neighborhood? If two people say no, it won't, and one person says yes, it will, that application is defeated. If we had five members, and three agreed and two didn't, that home occupation would be approved. So it's really to the disadvantage of the citizens that we only have three members because we unanimously have to agree...
One person has more power.
One person has a lot of power.
A lot of power.
And that's because the majority vote is the majority of the seats of the board, rather than the majority of the people pressing for the meeting.
Okay.
And that's by state statute.
Roberts rules.
So, I said also on the Planning Commission, who is kind of slowly having the same issue as folks leave, and we haven't gotten folks on. And I know that in some towns, the DRB and the Planning Commission are one entity. Has Shastbury ever had that situation? Or is there a reason why they're separate?
There's a reason for the separation.
Okay.
Which is the, the zoning administrator gets to make independent decisions on applications. And if they deny an application, or they can't grant the application because it involves judgment, they're not allowed to get into the gray area. If it's allowed under the rules, they can grant it. If there's any question about that, they move it up to the DRB.
Okay.
They also handle appeals, so they're handling appeals of the zoning administrator's decisions.
Right.
And sometimes in the past, those have been about whether they are enforcing the bylaws. The DRB then has to decide what to do with that appeal. And it's hard for the appeals body to also be the supervisor of the zoning administrator who's trying to do their level best, because they're having to present their case, so to speak, to the DRB as to why they should do or not do a certain thing in an enforcement or permit application. So the supervision was intentionally put in place of the Planning Commission so that the body hearing the appeal wasn't the same one telling them how to do their job or whether or not they were doing a good job.
Okay.
It was just creating too much friction to have the DRB also be the zoning administrator's supervisor. So this sort of, the Planning Commission has all the same knowledge and understanding as the DRB members, and an understanding of what the zoning administrator should do, but they're not directly involved with the day-to-day work of the zoning administrator the same way the DRB is, so it makes for a nice separation of responsibility.
I see. Okay. I was just thinking, because we all have kind of the same body of knowledge, and maybe those alternative alternates, if you get to the wall, potentially could be made up by a Planning Commission member. But if there's a separation that needs to maintain, then...
If they were one group, you would be then embedding the adjudicating...
Right.
Party, the DRB, right into the, into the Planning Commission, which is developing the criteria.
The bylaws. Yes.
And that is enough separation of...
Of the things. Okay.
Lon, you remember like 50, 60 years ago, Bob McWaters in North Bennington was the man?
He was the right one.
He did. He did both. But the state separated him.
So, I don't...
It's a good point.
I don't have anything further to add, other than if you run across people who might be good candidates and so on, tap them on the shoulder.
This is serious. Somehow, we've got to come up with a, with a list or start calling people or something like that. I don't know.
It's, I've really enjoyed it. I wanted to do it at first. I wasn't sure if I was going to enjoy it. I've really enjoyed the people I've worked with, with Mike and Ted and Tom and Huncherick. It's been very informative. The hearings are very comfortable. There's a real nice exchange between us and the folks that come in. I think it's been a great experience.
Thank you, Mike. We'll work on it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Tim? Tim Skoggins, you're very familiar with this board.
I am very familiar with this board. Nice to see things are still moving along.
Thank you.
And you attract crowds that I could... And you attract crowds that I could never draw.
Sometimes that's not good.
That's impressive. High-capacity audience.
So I wanted to update you on things that are happening with the CUD, the Communication Union District. And the CUD is charged with figuring out how to get broadband to people here. And next slide, I'll just go right. Good. And the answer is broadband is happening even as we speak. CCI, which is Consolidated Communications Incorporated, trucks are rolling all over Bennington County. You've probably seen them. And we are on track this year to see 500 of the residences that have been identified as underserved, meaning that they don't have at least 25 over three internet, which means essentially people on DSL will get reached this construction season will be online probably, if they want to be by the fall, and the rest in 2023. And there's an asterisk there that says almost. There's a handful of places that are really hard to reach, and I'll talk a little bit more about those. But a key part of it that's going to happen in 2023 involves the CUD in partnership with CCI to fund the build-out. And what we were able to do is focus CCI on our underserved, essentially get the job done. And as it's panning out, Shastbury is at the top of the list. And I think probably most of those, most of our underserved will be part of that 500. And people in Shastbury can start ordering, pre-ordering fiber internet now. You can go to the website and start pre-ordering. There's one, should be a background one. Is it after that? Oh, okay. Well, there is a background one. Hello? Okay, I lost a slide. Well, the background was just talking about the Communication Union District. We were formed in 2019 before COVID because we knew even back then that we needed internet. Even before everybody got on Zoom, we were working on the problem. And we have been working since then. A lot of, there are 10 CUDs across, 10 or more now, I think, across the state. Different ones are taking different approaches to the problem. But in our case, the right way to approach it turned out to be in public-private partnership with Consolidated. Consolidated Communications Incorporated, formerly Fairpoint Telephone Company. I'm not sure who bought who or if they changed their name or how that came about, but that's sort of like your phone company used to be Fairpoint and then now your phone and your DSL company is Consolidated. And very soon it will be your fiber internet company. Consolidated is rebranding their product, their fiber product as Phidium Fiber. And phidiumfiber.com is where you go to see if your address is being served yet. So world-class broadband is coming to Bennington County. Fiber optic cable is the technology of choice. That's what we always hoped we would get here, and that's what we're getting here. The state has mandated that for the CUDs should strive to provide service levels of 100 over 100 megabits per second. That's upload and download speed, symmetrical upload and download speed. And as we all learned during COVID, that upload becomes very important when you're trying to send your video out of your house to be part of a Zoom meeting. And that's why we knew why that standard was established. With fiber, you can do a whole lot better than that. They will be offering one gigabit over one gigabit service immediately. They have plans eventually to go faster than that, probably something that businesses would be interested in if they had people all through their office that were doing Zooms at the same time. And there are cheaper options available if you think that's more than you need. The internet build-out is coming in three phases. The first phase is funded entirely by CCI. And that's going to get, like I say, 400 underserved in Bennington County and I think just about everybody in Shastbury is going to be in this first phase. Then the second phase is about 2,000. So there's a total of 2,500 underserved residences that have been identified in our area. And this is where the CUD has stepped in to get funding through the state, which is ARPA funding that's been set aside through, by the state to go through the VCCB. Sorry if I get too many initials flying around here, but ARPA is the Recovery Act.
American Rescue.
American Rescue Plan Act, thank you, yes. And then VCCB is Vermont Community Broadband Board. So what happened there was all these CUDs were popping up all over and it became apparent that there needed the central authority in the state to help them. And then the ARPA money started falling from the sky and we needed the state to sort of dole that out. So the CUD is making an application to the Vermont Board, the VCCB, for eight or nine million dollars that will be passed to Consolidated to direct them as they're building out to make sure they hit these 2,500 people that are identified as underserved. And then there is also a Phase 2B next year that is more of Consolidated's own work where they are building out, often overbuilding with where there is cable. So a lot of people will have a choice, which is an amazing thing to think about, that people who have been lucky to have cable now will have a choice of competitors to get internet from. CCI is also getting funded through other federal programs. ARDOF is another set of initials that they were able to get money from to, that was trying, the federal program directing companies to serve the underserved. And then part of what the CUD's mandate is that we have to have a universal service plan. It means we have to cover everybody. And if they are on the electrical grid, there needs to be at least a plan in place for them to eventually get internet. And this is what we call the toughest 20. I had late information this afternoon. That's down to about 17 locations all over the county that we just, CCI doesn't know how they can serve. And so we have to figure out, find other providers or maybe reach across, some of them are edge cases, like maybe there's a New York provider that can provide them. But these are hard-to-reach locations. A lot of times we're talking about a camp that accidentally got hooked up to the electrical grid, so we have to figure out a way to get it internet. And I also found out late today, there are no locations actually in Shastbury. I thought there were two. As we whittled away, it turned out they're not on the electrical grid, so they can't be served. This is the map. It's kind of hard to see, but in the bottom left, if you can see where it says Bennington above that is, of course, a Shastbury. And all those green lines are Phase 1, where fiber internet is going into Shastbury this year. And you will look closely and see that some of those green lines go up in Shastbury Hollow, which is, I think, a tremendously exciting thing. I'm sure it's exciting for those people out there if they get word of it. I'm sure they're not watching us right now because they don't have internet. But I was going to ask if the board would allow my slides to go into the minutes of this meeting because I know some people like that will go read the minutes when they're at work the next day and find out that they can get internets.
What is the territory of the CUD? Did it include some of Wyndham County?
It's essentially Bennington County. There are, it's really dictated by the 14 towns in the CUD. That was what was on the slide that was missing. And I can't remember all the names, but it's essentially Bennington County. Probably a little bit of overlap or underlap. CUDs can actually overlap and a town can belong to more than one CUD and try to, you know, see who gets to them first.
I was thinking a while back that we actually went in with Wyndham County to form a bigger CUD, but that wasn't necessary.
That was talked about a lot, but that is not how it worked out.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
How much extra does this cost to the homeowner?
It's actually cheaper. I've looked into it because I have DSL. At my house at Maple Hill, it's going to be $50 cheaper a month for me to get this Phidium Fiber than it is to get my internet DSL at 10 MPS at the moment. So a huge savings to customers, I think. And that was kind of like a middle-of-the-line plan that was going to exponentially increase mine things.
Yeah. And part of our contract with CCI says that they apply the same rates to all of Vermont. So we don't, whatever their competitive rate, where they're competing with cable, where they're overbuilding cable and trying to compete on price with Xfinity, everybody gets the same rate. So that should help drive down prices. And so, as I said, you can check and see if you can pre-order now. And if you're in Shastbury, your address is probably ready. I got a notice the other day that my address, they're like two weeks away from being ready to offer it. So you go to phidiumfiber.com, you search for your address. If you're on the list, they'll tell you, you know, when you're available. And if you're really close, you can go ahead and pre-order. Pre-order does not require putting any money up. It just says, yes, I really want this. And so everybody may not know, especially, you know, if you've been in the hollow trying to check your email and DSL for 20 years, what does it mean that I can get fiber? It means in terms of communications, everything. Whatever you could do through cable, you know, bundling internet, TV and phone, all of that can happen through cable. There, for example, you know, internet, like I say, world-class speeds that are what we call future-proof, the fiber, once it's laid in place, they can add new equipment and it could get faster and faster if we figure out some day that we need more than a gigabyte both ways. They can stick in a new piece of equipment and it can get faster because there's huge amounts of capacity in that cable that go unused when it's first installed. It's symmetrical, as I said, so up and download speeds are the same. So when you're doing a Zoom meeting, when, you know, on cable, you've got 100 down, but you've got, you know, four going up, which means you probably can't do twos in meetings at the same time in your house. But with this, you'll be able to. Fiber internet has low lag, which is, lag is the time delay. It's analogous to when you're talking on the phone and there's a time delay until they come back. That same kind of thing happens with internet connections. And that's really particularly important to people who play interactive games because if there's lag, you could shut off the dial. TV, you can get through your internet using your smart TV or a device like Roku, which you can hook up to any TV. And then you can order movies à la carte on a service like Vudu or Amazon. Or you can get essentially cable TV through a service like YouTube TV or Sleen, and there are many others. And phone, you can get, your landline phone can go through the fiber internet. I use a device called Uma, which you buy the box and then it's essentially free. You just pay the FCC tax each month, which in my case is like $5. Or you can go through a service like Vonage, which does phone over the internet. And it also helps your cell service. Probably most people know, maybe they don't, that if you've got good cell service or good Wi-Fi in your home, which you will have if you have fiber, your phone has an option called Wi-Fi Calling, which will send your phone calls through the Wi-Fi. So it kind of solves that problem, at least in your house. So again, broadband is coming. We're expecting near universal coverage in our area by the end of 2023. And you're going to have a choice. CCI is overbuilding significant areas, actively going to compete against cable, which is good for everybody. And as Martha was saying, there's levels of, different levels of service available. And so this is really exciting for those of us who were with the CUD from the beginning who had no idea how we were going to move this forward. And now here we are. Problem is practically solved, at least in our area.
Thank you for all of your efforts and the whole team. This is truly incredible for Shastbury.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay. Couple people earlier in public comments spoke about Cole Hall and that was really on our agenda. We are sending out a request.
Request for qualifications. There's, when we started talking about this, and we've been talking about continuing on with Cole Hall for a while, we're at the point now where the original concept or something we were thinking about, the primary motive here is we have a very limited accessibility building. So we were looking to change that. We originally were thinking about going out the side here to an elevator and working on it that way. All these kind of got delayed a little bit with COVID and I came across an old plan that had an addition going out to the back here, which then allowed us to take down this entire side structure here. We store the side to its original church center and then the main entrance would be in the rear here. So there's a couple ways of going about this, a request for proposals and a request for qualifications. The request for proposals, frankly, we don't have the technical ability to do a proper proposal to put out for anybody. So the request for qualifications is a request for architects and engineers to submit their qualifications. And it'll be similar to how we just picked or will be picking someone for our sewer feasibility study, sidewalk study. We interview a number of people who apply, engineering firms and architectural firms, and we pick one. And we develop the plan and the cost structure with that firm that we choose. Because a lot of this is just conceptual now. Like this room started with a thought I had one day when it was too noisy up here. And looking at this thing that was designed for the back, it was very preliminary, but it was very intriguing and it fits in, makes the whole building look better. The original size, I don't believe we need that size, so we can cut a little cost out of it. But it dovetails into the accessibility because the elevator could go back there. It dovetails into getting more space for the town clerk. It also matches a lot of current funding. There's accessibility grants from the state. There's grants for, part of what I want in this is a new heating system for the building. The state just passed a law in the last session that is going to help municipalities fund that, so there's money for that. So as we move forward, there's a lot of outside money. And this would incorporate also redoing the entire landscape outside. I've been talking with different veterans for quite a while about redoing the front, moving the veterans monument up and over to this side, to the west side of the front, and expanding the park out front to make it just a better presentation overall for everyone.
Fire exit.
The fire exit, well, this has to be replaced. The front steps have to be redone to match code. And that's, again, we're back into all the little accessibility things and bringing the whole building up to code. I know going back, we would even talked about moving at one point and there's really no place to go. We're going to be here forever. So part of the, after the qualifications, what we're looking for is everything from new structural engineering study of the building. That hasn't been done now in probably 10 years. So before we move forward, let's look at it again. Some of you remember a few years back, we put in new beams up top for the roof. There's a number of things to look at that. The heating system, I think we all know, needs to be replaced. But basically, we put this out, we pick the architect and engineer and we start having discussions. And then we'll develop the cost. It would be my goal to have that firm take it through development with the committee, take it out to bid, and then they would also be the construction managers. It's actually exactly how we did the garage, except we started the garage with a canned building from Morton. We had the basic design from that building, but we still hired the architects because the internal stuff has to be made to fit us. So this would just. So this would just be taking this concept that was developed a few years back, of the extension off the back, and adjusting it to how we need now. Like I said, that was across the whole back, two stories. I don't think we need that space. But we could certainly increase the capacity of this room. We can increase the capacity of the vault downstairs. We can increase the size of the list of the clerk's office. And of course, put in an elevator and remove that lift in the corner. Accessibility is what's really, to me, driving this. This is way overdue to make this building more friendly for people who have difficulty accessing it. And it's kind of the time, because part of this has to be looked at with arper money too, because otherwise it goes to bonding. Because there is no way around it. At some point, this building is going to have to be brought up to standards. And I think this is the first step. All the numbers I have are a good 10, 12 years old for all these proposals, except for the elevator shaft out here, which I think we're going to move on from. So there's no real way for a non-professional to come up with new numbers. And you can add whatever kind of inflation factor you want to it. But unless you're in the business, you really don't know what you're talking about. But there are a number of sources. I mean, the Parks Committee has already committed some money to it. Depending on how much we can develop around here, be green spaces out, a lot more. The veterans, there isn't a veterans committee right now, but I've spoken with a great number of veterans about improving the park out front. And we'd just improve this building in, for the next 75, 100 years. Because the building itself is not going anywhere. This is going to be here forever. And whether we're here or not, we're always going to have to preserve this building. And I think we can do this expansion with the same care we did with just this little renovation up here. Because nothing in this building was damaged or changed when we did this. The tin ceiling is still up there. Even the little things over the doorways are all there. So, which I think are all incredibly important parts of this building. The little ticket window for when they had movies here in the 20s is still there. You know, I think it's time to just, we've already discussed funding this part of it. Just want to get this out and get this moving, so we can do as quick as we can.
You need approval from the board to send it out?
Yeah, I'd like a vote from the board to approve sending out the qualifications. And this will be go out for August 1st, and it'll be due back September 1st. And then we'll, it takes time to go through and interview, just like we did with the other request for qualifications.
I'd make a motion to move forward the request for qualifications for the Cole Hall renovation.
Got a motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Tony. Discussion? Any comments, Martha, or anything? I think it's important. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0.
I am looking at, we renovated our 1892 building in Bennington, the one I just sold with our Parsons. And we renovated the heating system using the heat pump system. And the one benefit of global warming is that system got us all through the winter. We only used about a tank of gas, of heating oil, for an entire season for an old 1892 house, where we were filling that up once a month. And we were able to do something else that I think the employees here would appreciate, which is cooling, because it's a single system. The one thing we couldn't afford to do was to lower the cost of the electricity by also purchasing a share of one of the cooperative producers of electricity through the solar arrays, which there is at least one company in Bennington that's selling shares. And if you have to share that, then it generates electricity and you get credits against the higher electric bills that you're going to have with a split system. So it would be, it's a great opportunity to do a more environmentally friendly and more cost-effective business.
That's all part of what this is going to.
Yeah, it is. And a great benefit too is that bill that was passed this year, specifically for municipalities to redo their mechanicals. And ours was due anyways, so we do definitely want to move away from, you know, the oil we use now. And this will all be part of the discussion and design of the building to make it much more efficient. Because there are limits to insulating and other things in this building. I don't know, I've been behind these rock walls when we were doing some repairs. And it's amazing how this building is together. It's never coming down. But it'll be tough to insulate, yeah.
The solar energy program would also benefit the town garage in the sense that you're bonding enough to get credits. It would also help you with your usage of the town garage. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have a speed ordinance that you're going to put up on the screen?
I don't have it to put up on the board. I didn't think about bringing that up there. But it will be on the website this last one, starting tomorrow. What we're doing is we're updating a 1975 speed ordinance to try and include some changes that have been requested by residents and just change some other roads that just should not be 35 mile an hour roads. The ones that will be changed are pretty minimal, being changed to 25. One is like Sunset Drive, which is the only road in Perrin Acres that is not 25. That's a little thumbnail street. I think it just got left off, so we're just going to add that in. Grandview, which is a downhill, we've had many residents complain about that road, and it should not be a 35. So proposing changing that to 25. Grant Street, which runs off of that, is a very short L-shaped street, and we'll change that. Holy Smoke Road, because there's a lot of bends and really narrows in, shouldn't be 35 because people who don't know the road could come down that way. Potter Montgomery, obviously, anyone who's been on Potter Montgomery knows that shouldn't be 35. And then just to address some things on Maple Hill and Old Depot. When you come in from Arlington, it's a long stretch of gravel road that's 25 miles an hour. And anyways, when you get to Shasburg, it changes to 35. So we can, from an engineering standpoint, we can change that to 25 just to make it continuous to the pavement at the railroad crossing. And then it would revert back to 35 miles an hour. Maple Hill, from the intersection of Old Depot to the intersection of East Road, would change from 35 to 25, because as you go up the hill, it narrows, it has several sharp turns. And when you get to Cider Mill, it's almost, you know, a U-turn there. And it's very difficult coming in either direction to see who's coming the other way. And just having warning signs of a curve and slowing down, I don't think make it there. So we would change that up to where it intersects with East Road. And then Maple Hill would continue 35 from that juncture to the Arlington Town Line. Because there's not really an engineering reason to change that. Those would be the major changes. And Jack Cross Road would revert from a 35 to 25, because that's like Potter Montgomery. You know, it's too big. For these, I have to do an engineering study. I've done these on 7A when we were doing the sidewalk over there. Did it for Elm Street when we changed the speed limit there. And I did them for quite a number of years in New Jersey. These aren't engineering studies in the sense that you need to be an engineer. You just have to follow some guidelines. These roads don't have the traffic volume to measure speed. Because you would be there for days trying to get enough numbers to make it realistic. But mostly based on the design and the width of the road, how many houses are located on it. And so all these would be able to fit in nicely with that kind of a study. Any question on them? Now, that would allow us to change the speed limits. They can also be challenged once this becomes adopted by the board. We go into the 60-day period, which is one reason why I want to get this on for August 1st. Because if someone appeals, they would have to mid-September to submit a petition, I mean, to the town clerk for a vote at a town meeting. So you have to have a town meeting within 30 days or 60 days following the petition. So the easiest way for us to guard against a petition is to line this up with the November election, because we can have a "town meeting," quote unquote, at polling day at the election day. We have a select board meeting the night before. Just schedule our informational meeting in that for these two votes. And then the next day, we can have a separate paper ballot. Marley's been through this with the AG's office already. And we can just have a ballot that way if need be. But if we don't line it up, we're going to have to have a special poll thing, which could be a little bit more difficult to do. We are looking at one thing that popped up from the AG's office about absentee ballots and the mailing dates, and do these have to be included? You know, we're waiting on a reply on that question, but.
Do you know how many names it takes to make a, create a petition?
I believe it's 5% of the electorate, but I'm not sure. That's a question I'll have to run by Marley once she gets back.
So it's more than just a few neighbors?
It's more than a few neighbors, yeah. You're going to have to have, I would guess, 50 to 60 signatures to get it on the ballot. So 90% of the roads in town are staying the same. You really just can't go out. And having done this before, normally, a lot of people think those speed limits should change. And you just can't go out and do it if these people want their speed limits changed. Because the more you change speed limits, the less people respect speed limits. Because people think, oh, this should be 25. But the rule of thumb, basically, is the 80th, 85th percentile where people are driving is what the speed limit is, no matter what the sign says. You know, most people in 25s are driving around 35. It's the nature of the road. And people slow down for the obvious obstructions. What I did notice, because this ordinance was so old and some of it was so confusing, I had to drive around the entire town and see what signs were where. And some I found very confusing myself. But I did notice, we don't have enough, and you don't want to go crazy with signs around here, but there are a few bends you come up to that should really have advanced warning signs to slow or something. Because we have to take into account that people driving around town, they're not all from here. And, you know, you come around one of these bends and suddenly the road's not really the way it should be.
There are several signs around town that are not even in the ordinance. I think, I don't know if somebody just decided to put them up or what, but there's.
I found two roads that had speed limits in different directions. If you're going north, it was one speed limit. If you're going south, it was the other direction. And so, you know, you have to take them down. People must have found them, just put them up. We want them to drive 30 instead of 35.
I had a question. Several folks that live on Hawks Ave have reached out to me. So that's over on near 67. And there have been quite a few near accidents happening over there. It is 25 on both sides, going both directions. But they were asking what kind of enforcement mechanisms are there beyond, I don't know if we can park a sheriff there, but they're very concerned about not only the trucks that are going through that way, but also things. So I said I would bring it up tonight.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, and we'll be having those people in our first meeting, a meeting with the engineers and BRCRC and the state reps on Tuesday next week for the beginning of the sidewalk study area over there, which includes Hawks. So shortly after that, we'll be, I have a list of people in my computer who originally commented on the need for sidewalks and things over there. So we'll be having a public meeting, people to discuss all this stuff. Because a study like that is very community-oriented. We want to have the people from the neighborhoods in. It's for sidewalks and traffic control and things like that. And I'll tell you, yes, enforcement is a problem. You know, the troopers have limited time. The sheriffs, we pay them limited hours.
Right, we only have 12 hours a week, and Shasburg is a big place.
Big, and we do expect them to be patrolling the town too. So we can assign them, and I'll tell you from an operational point of view, a street like Hawks, where if you're parked on the street, you can be seen almost the entire length, and you have to slow down and go by them anyway. So it's difficult to position a car correctly there to do anything. Even the cars they have now, which, you know, you can't really tell, but speeders normally know what they're looking for to slow down. And, you know, you've seen one, you've seen them all. It's a little bit difficult for a speed control there. And the speed warning signs, you know, just don't have the same effect.
Sure, sure. Okay. I just wanted to bring that up because several folks reached out to me when they saw the agenda tonight.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to get Grandview on here, because that's, there's no need for us to wait on that. That can just go down. And Hawks is part of the whole study system.
Sure, okay.
And it's another place, like Joe was mentioning, Cleveland, that, you know, it may get to the point where a speed calming device, like a table or a speed hump, something like that, is just needed to break the speed on the street. I did a speed, that wasn't a speed study, it was a truck study. And it really dropped off significantly after the pipeline was finished over here. Because that was somewhere during the pandemic. I don't remember when. But there were a lot of trucks going through there. And in the three weeks or a month I spent doing that, you know, on a few hours' day here and there, I noticed the drop, significant drop in truck traffic as soon as that was over. There's always going to be a few down there, no matter what you do, because there's going to be a few guys who are just going to drive down the street. Unfortunately, because they know what are the possibility of a sheriff or a trooper being on this road right now. Let's see, basically nil. So they're going to do it anyway. But it is all part of the study, so.
Okay, good. I'll let them know that it's to be coming.
Well, it's also a result, a direct result of that intersection at 67.
Yes.
So that trucks, trucks always, and traffic avoids that intersection. So it really is.
If you're a truck, especially with a trailer, you have to dive bomb into that and just push people out of the way. Because the corner, I don't know how they got that approved. It's not a good friendly design, even if you have a long car. It's a challenge.
Yeah, you always hit it.
Yeah, yeah. That's just something we have to deal with.
One side of Hawks Avenue is North Bennington.
No.
Oh, it's, oh, okay.
All the way down to the banks and then banks to the corner.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's all right.
The Hyman House, the yellow house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's pretty much the one.
Oh, okay, okay. I was thinking that it was half and half.
Yeah, because part of the rough idea here, which is the better, interesting part of the idea is, if we put in the sidewalks, it would actually build what the state wants is like a walking loop that would extend down from down Hawks to banks, all the way through the village and back up again. So it's kind, that part of it is pretty interesting. We're going to run into significant, and this is way off topic, but we're going to run into significant expense and details in a drainage system to come down Grandview, I can tell you that. But we'll know that in a little bit. So that's basically the speed ordinance. It's not going to change. Speed's on a lot of roads. But it did make me aware of how we do need to put up some signage for some of the bigger bends. Again, you don't want to change the speed limit of a road because there's a bend in it. You know, there might be a tight spot, but a little warning sign is there, we'll correct that. And they'll tell you that for most gravel roads, they don't want you getting into really restrictive speed limits. Because people float to where it's comfortable and it's accessible to them. Just as an aside for a minute, there's another one going to be on here too, and that's closing a legal trail up between Dexter that we talked about a while ago. We're going to do both of those next meeting August 1st. So if anyone has an issue with that one. And that's just closing that one legal trail to motorized vehicles at the end of Dexter, because it gets you as far more than we thought. We didn't know anybody was on it, and it's not maintained. And we thought people were hiking on it. Turns out people are driving on it and doing property damage. So we just want to close that off.
I think the one road that is changed is Myers will not longer be a 30. It'll go back to a 35.
Correct. Myers somehow is a 30, which isn't even posted, so it'll go back to a 35. And that's a road that's easily corrected too, with, especially when you get up to that second, where you're going westbound, the second sharp bend is very tight. And that just needs to be worn down at that section to slow down there. And a couple of years ago, we put the stop sign, a head sign for when you're coming in by Eric. Because, you know, when I first started going down, if you don't live here, come around that bend, you don't expect a stop sign to be there. So those are the kind of little improvements that can make the road safer. We don't have a tremendous number of accidents in this town. And most of them, the larger ones I know of, were on East Road, disregarding the state highway over here, which is another subject. And most of the ones on East Road were speed on gravel, which sometimes doesn't mix. But it's a long, straight road, for the most part, and making it, you know, 25 is just unrealistic. No one will drive it.
Questions, comments? Questions, comments, everybody?
So we have roads reports next, but let's go, because Mr. Weaver's been sitting here patiently for our bids. We had two bids out, one for Murphy Hill Road, a culvert project, and West Mountain Road, Blueberry Hill Drainage Project. Both of these are state-funded grants. He solicited Weaver Excavating, Matt Morris Excavating, Mike Slaven Excavation, and Mark Honorato Excavating. See bids from Mr. Weaver here. Do you just want me to read these from here or something?
No, go ahead.
So Mr. Weaver, Weaver Excavating, put in for both. The other companies decided that they didn't want a bid for these for some reason. So the first bid is for Murphy Hill Road, Project 39. The bid total is $59,999.79. And let me look at my total here. That's within the grant amount. We have a grant for this project of $46,000. Our match covers the rest of it. So for these bids, what we'll do is what I always do, send these back to Mike after we open them for the technical review of them, make sure it's what he wants. Because I don't know enough about it to make that decision, to be completely honest with the board. Next one is West Mountain Road at Blueberry Hill. Anybody who's been in there during the spring knows that that needs a fix. So again, Mr. Weaver's company is the only one that bid on this. The bid is for $29,995. And our grant for that was $28,000, I went down here somewhere. Sorry. $22,900 was our grant money for that. So the rest of that is just about our match, too, for that one. So again, I'll send this to Mike to review and see, and then we'll bring it back for approval from the board the next one if it meets the specs. Mr. Weaver's here, if anybody has any questions on these.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Other road business, I went to Sunderland and asked if we could borrow their mower. And they are allowing us to use their roadside mower for a little bit of time. As you're aware, our brand new mower with our brand new boom have been sitting over in Salem for a couple of months now. I'm beginning to wonder, we're not really getting a straight answer here. We ordered a system that was built to work with each other. And, you know, it's, there's couples into that, and you have a mower. And we don't have one. So we're still trying to get a satisfactory answer why part A doesn't fit on part B, because it's supposed to. And we're working on it, but we can't. It's mid-July, and we haven't mowed anything yet. The guys are a little sick of weed whacking around intersections. So I just stopped up in Sunderland and asked if we could borrow theirs. So we'll do the intersections, and hopefully we'll get this resolved. If it is some kind of issue with A doesn't fit B, in this market, it may be a bit of a delay getting the right part. It was ordered correctly. Like I said, I'm trying to figure out what really is the story here. It started out as it was manpower and have this or that, but everything's been there. You know, we're actually making payments on this thing already. We have a brand new tractor, a brand new boom that are sitting next to each other in a parking lot. Yeah. Well, yeah, it's, you buy the tractor that has the attachments to the boom, that has the others have the attachment, then put them together, and you have a tractor, you know. It's, it's not even a lot of, yeah, it's not even a lot of... So we'll find out. But at least we can mow the intersections. And we do regret that the roads are kind of filling out, shall we say, on the signs. It's one of those things.
Wildflowers, pollinator corridors.
Yeah, yeah.
Pollinator corridors.
The problem is, you get that, what is that thing called?
Poison forest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Poison forest.
And it's, we're going to have a problem with it now. I mean...
If you're biking, your head down there. It can be close.
Yeah, I know. But we'll do what we can with it. And hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have an explanation for attractive. Because I think we really have to get a solid explanation.
Response.
Unfortunately, you know, we don't have anything built into the contract for a penalty for lateness or anything. Frankly, we've never had this problem before, you know, so...
It's always been with trucks.
Huh?
It's always been with trucks.
Yeah, yeah, like the truck that burned up. But that was a whole nother issue.
Lucky 13.
Yeah, lucky 13, yeah, yeah. It stole my favorite truck.
Yeah.
That's about it for roads.
Any other questions or comments? I got an email from the chairman of the ARPA committee, just says that they're compiling information and that sort of stuff. Tony, you have anything further on that?
Yeah, Lon mentioned that he didn't receive a postcard. If you have not...
It's because we didn't get to the folks that were in the 2-1 district that lived in North Bennington.
Really? I got a postcard.
Oh, so I've talked to about 35 people that are in that general zone that did not get a postcard.
Wow. So there are postcards in six locations. The post offices, both the Shaftesbury and the North Bennington, the post office has a box with empty cards. Paulins has one.
Clearbrook, the chocolate farm.
Clearbrook has them.
I will be at tomorrow night's McCullough on the lawn if folks want to talk to me.
So there are numbers. Also, you can check on the town website. And you can respond by email, by taking an online survey, or putting in the postcard, or just contacting the ARPA committee through the town office. We're going to compile them. They're compiling them now. And as they come in, we're putting them all together. Two people on the committee are doing that. And from there, hopefully, a list will generate, and we're already beginning to get.
Yeah, we've had over 120, I think, responses.
And we're getting, we're getting common topics, so that we'll be able to prioritize them. I think that's it.
I think so, yeah.
Martha, what area did you just mention that you got before?
It's like in the North Bennington district, like some folks that were over in Perrin Acres, I heard, didn't get any. And then folks out near you, near Roland Road, didn't get them. Some folks on Grandview. So kind of that whole...
That's weird. That whole section is...
Area, kind of, that is the weird, you know, they're in North Bennington, but they go here.
Yeah, other people have gotten theirs. I wonder...
I don't know, maybe they went out in the, you know...
Yeah.
Thing, because some people are getting stacks of mail, and it was pretty tiny.
You know, when we were trying to break down routes, the easiest thing was to use the whole zip code for the whole area, and that's what we did. So I don't understand why the postal service isn't delivering these individual accounts.
And some of them are just getting them now. And that was the other thing. So, yeah. And so maybe they're still en route and just have not gotten to...
Yeah, that's strange.
They're very late. But people are getting, you know, weeks worth of mail all in one. So I'm sure people are trying to get through the mail as well. So I've been trying to reach out to those people and getting it to them, driving by, and just handing it to them when I find out about it, so...
Yeah, I can't explain that.
I'm like, here's one for you.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay. We're up to other business. Does anybody have any other business they want to bring before the board? Review of action items. We are going to, at our next meeting, hopefully, we're going to have a, be able to create a tax rate.
Yep. We should have the grand list done. Well, the grand list is done, it just has to be signed when the clerk comes back next week. Just have to coordinate with the assessor, because we don't have listers anymore. The state law is kind of vague in saying that listers have to sign it. And the guidelines, listers and assessors mean the same thing. However, our assessor asked that the assistant, the assessor's assistant sign it, which I kind of threw up a red flag to, because the law doesn't mention anything about assessor's assistant signing anything. So I emailed our attorney at VLCT and said, you know, they allow this, they encourage this system. Now it's saying, you know, is it okay, can the assessor's assistant act as an agent of the assessor and sign this and be okay? Because we're not going to do it unless I get someone to tell me that it's okay. Because they're busy and they don't want to come down. It's like, well, we're paying you, so somebody's got to come down and sign this.
So we've got that, we've got the speed ordinance, the speed ordinance and the closure of Dexter.
Closure of the legal trail.
Yep.
I'm trying to find new members.
Absolutely, yes. Somehow...
For the DRP.
Anybody got any suggestions on how we go about that, or...
I have been shaking the trees for any of the committees, and very few people are wanting to do anything.
Yeah. We have the RFQ for the, will go out, well, that's be at a later meeting, but I'll have that out by the end of this week. And that might be it.
I think that's it. But it'll be a bit, kind of a busy meeting next time, so...
Yeah. And I will not be at the next meeting. I'll be on vacation. So I'll have this stuff out. And you're going to be on vacation the week before. So Tony, I'll be sending you everything before I leave.
Great, thanks.
Anytime.
Who is, who's going to do the Zoom?
I asked Shelley to come do Zoom, because I think the last time I was here, we had Mike do it. But it's not good for a board member to be doing this while the meeting's going on. So Shelley said she can do it on the first. And I'm working on Plan B, because we need multiple backups in case.
Something happens.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Other action items other than that? Okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel issues. When we come out of executive session, we will just end the meeting, so you can, you can take that.
We will be taking a vote.
Are we going to vote in public on that?
Yeah. We can probably have the meeting in about a couple minutes, and then come back for a vote, because we have to have a public vote.
Yeah, we have to vote in public on that. Okay, then. Staying corrected, okay? So we, there will be one other...
So for those two people who are out there on Zoom, I'm going to mute and stop the video while we have an executive session, but we will be back.
Thanks for coming.
Executive session, entertain a motion to hire Kelly Daniels-Maitland as our animal control officer.
So moved.
It's moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. Thank you. And now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
So moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.